Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Could I have roll call, please, be?
Mr. Delacour?
Here.
Mr. Laurentini?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Here.
Here. All right. Say a pledge, please.
It's over here.
You have a flag. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the republic of which stands our nation, our government, and its true liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, the big flags are getting ready for 9/11 tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, John.
It only because one too big. It's a little sad.
We pulled our breath. All right. Next order of business tonight would be acceptance of the minutes from August 27th, 2024.
Motion.
Does everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Any changes, revisions? All right. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes as written? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. Next order of business, public hearing. Appeal number 247828, area variance, Porco variance, Stanley Porco and Carlo Porco seeking an area variance sections 24021F3 and 24021F2 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district. Where no fencing or columns are to be over four feet in height in a front yard, the applicant is proposing a wall of seven feet in height and fencing at six feet in height for the installation of a metal gate and columns at the end of the driveway, thus requesting a variance of three feet. Where only four feet, for only four feet height for fencing in the front yard is permitted, the applicant is proposing six feet in height of fencing for the installation of a security fence, thus requesting a variance of two feet. The properties are located as follows. 84 New Hackensack Road, tax grid number 615802730610 would be Stanley Porco, 6.44 acres, and 86 New Hackensack Road, tax grid number 615802733579, Carlo Porco, 2.57 acres in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Just for the record, Pete?
Yes.
It says seven feet. Now, this applicant, or this application?
Right.
You said six feet. I don't know which one is wrong.
I said seven.
It's a little technical. No, you said six feet.
Seven feet in height and fencing at six feet in height for the installation of a variance of three feet.
Seven foot, seven foot columns?
Right.
So the gate's seven, right? With the column?
When he said six, I was just wondering.
And I think the fence is six, right?
The fencing is six foot.
Right.
The wall column is seven.
Seven.
Okay.
Right.
Well, you were supposed to get a picture there, weren't we?
Anybody here?
Yeah. Anybody here tonight representing this application?
I got a call from Mr. Paul Porco. He said his brother's coming to stay. I got a call from Carlo.
Okay. Okay, so we should maybe?
Revisit it if they come.
Yeah. Do we leave the public hearing open? Right, just move on?
At this point.
Okay. So we'll move on to the next application. All right. Next up on the agenda, appeal number 747830, area variance, Ronald and Janine Pino seeking an area variance section 24037 of district regulations in R40 slash, I'm sorry, R20/40 zoning district. Where 50 feet to the front yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 22 feet for the construction of an eight-foot by 22-foot covered porch with two steps, thus requesting a variance of 28 feet. The property is located at 20 Pleasant Lane on .38 acres and is identified as tax grid number 615701422723 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion to open up the public hearing, please?
Motion to open public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Please. For the record, your name and address?
Jean Pino at 20 Pleasant Lane, Wappinger, Springs, New York. My husband Ron is...
Gotcha. And a brief description of what you need and why you need it for the public as well as the board?
Okay. It's to fulfill a dream. Let's put it that way. For about 30 years now, I've really wanted to replace a concrete slab which has always been our front porch. And it's presently four feet by 22 feet. It's in, we live in a relatively old neighborhood and codes have changed. And the code that is presently there is very difficult for our neighborhood to abide by. Getting 50 feet, we just don't have it. So we are requesting 20, hold on to this, requesting 28 feet so that we will be able to put up this front porch, which we feel will be enhancement to our house, but blend very nicely with the rest of our neighborhood. And it's just something that we would very much like to have permission to do.
Okay. We were all out there on Saturday, right? And took a look at what you got going on, see what you're up against and what you want to do. I personally, I think, pretty straightforward. The new publication, Barbara, has the new dimensions on it, right?
Everything was correct. And just for the record, they have an unusual amount of road frontage that belongs to the town, where normally it's 12, 13 feet. They look like they have over 21 feet. So they really have a lot more grass, per se.
It looked that way.
Yeah, than the regular house close to a road.
Yeah. It definitely looked that way, leaning out there.
Why, why is that?
Well, there's a cul-de-sac on there. It's just the way the road was laid. You know, who knows back in that time? Maybe the road's wider than usual.
Yeah, our house was built in 55.
Right. So that's, you know, who knows? It's just that in, I don't know if it's for everyone in that neighborhood, but it just looks like either just your side of the road has more, maybe the other side might only have six feet instead of 13, like where they got more.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes it happens. I don't have any further questions for the applicant, if you guys do.
Yeah. I mean, just comment, you know, since it is a cul-de-sac and a dead-end street, you know, like it doesn't have some of the same issues we had last meeting, you know, where you have a porch on a very busy street. I think that is a factor in this. You know, it's unlikely that the road is going to change substantially and, you know, so we're going to see the amount of traffic, you know, of a busier through road. Also, several of the properties, I think, across the street have similar reports as have been added. I don't know if the same setback issues, but, you know, stylistically, I think it would begin to match those a little bit more.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, like Barbara mentioned, the frontage on that house is quite a bit. Any other questions, guys? No? Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding this application? Okay. Nobody? Can I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I have a motion then to grant or deny the applicant a variance?
I'll make a motion to grant. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There's no substantial detriment will be created to nearby properties. There is no other feasible method available for them to pursue to achieve the benefit they seek other than having to request a variance. The requested variance is not substantial. The proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment to conditions on the neighborhood district. Alleged difficulty is self-created because this is what they want to do, and I understand why they want to do it. It makes sense. It makes a lot of sense. So therefore, I think we should grant this.
Do you have a second? Second?
Is substantial variance or not, did you hear that?
I'm sorry.
Number four, substantial variance.
Yeah, he did say that.
He said it's not substantial.
Yes.
Well.
I would, I would second.
All right. We have a second. Have roll call, please, be?
Mr. Delacour?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentini?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. DeNardo?
Yes.
Yes. Your variance has been granted. You're all set?
I'd like to say, Ron and I would like to thank all of you.
Sure.
We've not really worked very frequently with you, but I think professionally and understanding and kindness, and that goes a long way. And I thank you for that.
Well, thank you for the honor. Appreciate that.
And I'd like to thank you for making such a neat application.
It's a poster in our office. This is the way it should look.
Yep. Okay. Next up on tonight's agenda would be appeal number 747831, area variance, Dominic and Lucy DeSantis seeking an area variance section 24037 and 24053B4 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district, where 20 feet to the side yard left property line is required, the applicant can provide 16 feet for the construction of a 25-foot by 36-foot accessory apartment for the garage, thus requesting a variance of four feet. Where no more than 35% of the gross floor area of said principal dwelling and in no event shall exceed 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, the applicant is proposing an 800, I'm sorry, 900 square foot, 39% accessory apartment. The house is 2,300 square feet and 800 square feet would be 35%. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a variance of 95 square feet or 4%. The property is located at 8 Macintosh Lane on .38 acres and is identified as tax grid number 625702614932 in the town of Wappinger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. So I understand that there are some, some issues that need to be clarified. So we are going to be adjourning this public hearing to the second meeting in November?
November 26.
What's that? Which would be 11/26. All right. So then we just make a motion then? All right, so I make a motion then to adjourn this public hearing to 11/26?
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
Just one comment in relationship to that. You know, I would like to ask that, you know, when they're back in front of us, we have a full floor plan that shows the existing condition and a full floor plan that shows the proposed future addition or condition when the apartment is removed.
And just for the record, the applicant's architect did send us notice today asking for this to be removed.
Okay.
And set for the end of November.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, thanks. All right. So next up on the agenda, you guys are all set? We'd love to have you stay if you want, but you're free to go.
Mr. Porco is here.
First applicant.
Just gonna do that?
Yeah.
All right. So let's go back to the first item on the agenda is the, let's see, Porco variance, right? Porco variance?
Yeah.
Now, we opened the public hearing already.
Right.
So if you are here on behalf of that variance?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So your name and address, please, for the record.
Paul Porco, 86 New Hackensack Road. I'm here for Stanley Porco. He's in Europe.
Gotcha.
And just for the record?
I miss him.
Just for the record, you were a little late, so this was declared and they did open the public hearing.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was...
Wait, what?
Peter, I think we need to open 8 Macintosh to the public because we have someone here to speak.
Oh.
We're gonna do that now in the next public hearing?
Wouldn't it be November?
It is a public hearing, so...
Okay.
So let us just go back.
Okay. Thank you, please.
Sorry.
All right. So we'll go back to the appeal number 2473, I'm sorry, 7831, area variance, Dominic and Lucy DeSantis. So I need to open the public hearing again. All right. Have a motion, please, open the public hearing?
Oh, I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of this variance? Your name and address, please, for the record.
Alan Sinclair, 10 Macintosh Lane, Wappingers.
Gotcha.
I'm opposed to this only because there's a culvert that runs diagonally in the back of my property across the front, which originally changed that house as the only one facing uphill of the whole, or coming downhill. All the garages are facing down. They reversed it because of the culvert and the setback. That wasn't even in the plans that I was shown, that there's a culvert and I think it's a 30-foot setback. Few years ago, I put a shed up. I made sure it was within the boundaries I could. Otherwise, it would have been on the other side of the assessment, about 20 feet off the back of the house. I just want to keep the variance the way it was. It's already an encroachment to have a two-story house to put this garage in this apartment above it. And I, my only take on this whole thing is to get, to achieve a four-car garage because the original, the basement is going to remain the same according to the plan, and he has made maneuvers to figure out how he'll get a car in and turn it sideways because he collects cars.
Right.
That's his business. I don't care about that.
Right. Right. So you're...
We're making a drilling, a drilling to accept four cars underneath the house.
So your objection then is it's because of drainage? You think drainage is going to...
Oh, yes. Years ago, there was a wall put up. Well, there's always, originally water castated over that driveway.
Yeah.
And wiped it out two or three times when it was gravelled. Now it percolates because of the wall. And then looking at, since this application, I took some pictures. The stone wall is collapsing due to water pressure because there's a pool behind it. We don't know where that water is because there's always a problem down from there that last two of them had flooded into the roadway. It's caused the town to do the road over quite a few times because it's always full of ice during the winter. But the culvert, I clear out all the time to make sure it doesn't flood because it does if it gets high water. It will crest on my property and cascades over to a little valley and erodes a lot. But by controlling that, I can, I put a lot of vegetation in to stop that. That's about it. That's my only...
I think you didn't note that there's a drainage easement, correct?
So just for the record, just for the record, the survey that was originally given to us did not show that easement, and it was discovered in our office yesterday? So we called the architect and he called the surveyor, and that's why he pulled it so that he didn't, we know there's problems with the culvert and with the drainage easement, which would run part into what they want to build. So that's why he pulled it. So we're aware of that.
Okay. That's, that's probably the biggest, because it made the fact that we couldn't put things where we wanted because it dissects the corners of both houses.
Understood.
And I look down over, and I don't, you know, but that's their business. It's mostly, I think, for the garage. Thank you.
No, you're very welcome.
But we are aware, so we are looking at that.
Sure. Your name, please.
I'm going for how it's going to look. The only, the only two houses in this whole development are, the driveways are facing each other. Nowhere else. It's not that we're snooping on them all the time. They're there, we're here. They see what we do, they do what they do. They have a pool, and this is probably not relevant, but I just background. They have a pool that has been there for 48 years. For 40 of those years, it has been covered with all kinds of rotting sea creatures, animals, mosquitoes, a deer flying in from the...
Are you speaking to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. My husband says I'm loud enough. I don't know. Okay. For the last 35 years, it's been covered, and I really hope you saw this when you came to the neighborhood. It is an island. It is, got vegetation coming all over it. I don't think Michael's son has any, it has nothing to do with Lucy, who the applicant is. They've been taking care of her. There are three bedrooms. Michael wants a four-car garage. There are no four car garages, four car, in an elephant. It would make the whole place not nice, and we would be facing it like this. And they just don't maintain the property. If they haven't maintained the pool in 40 years, what's to say they're going to maintain this property? Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it. And Barbara mentioned, you know, some new things have come to light, right? And, and the town is doing their due diligence. And then, and we're looking into that.
No. I'm glad you spoke. We're sorry that we didn't. Usually, we just don't open it to the public till they actually present. So, but I just want to assure you, we're aware of a lot of these things, so...
Okay.
I'm not sure how much the town has to do with the pool, but I would call the board to help.
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure what the town can do about the pool, but if it's that bad, I would call the board to help.
You know, we don't want, my husband has been saying that a lot in the last years.
You got nothing to lose.
And nobody has seen what's underneath there.
Right.
But the island is actually broken. It can be good for the health of anybody.
The mosquitoes.
Yeah, it sounds like it. Okay. No, we appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sure. You're very welcome. All right. So now I can, a motion, please, right?
To re-adjourn.
To adjourn the public hearing to 11/26.
Oh, I'll make a motion to re-adjourn.
Tom and...
To 11/26.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. So back to the top of the agenda. Mr. Porco?
Yes, sir.
Just again, for the record, your name and address.
Paul Porco, 86 New Hackensack Road.
Gotcha.
Robert Porco.
And for the benefit for anybody listening in, the board, explain what you need and why you need it. Now, again, Barbara, just a quick question now. So it's really two separate properties, right?
It's one, in a sense, it's a fence and walls that will run together and meet in the middle.
So, yeah, in the middle, there's two parcels.
Yes.
One parcel, it's 84.
Yes.
86. So we have an island in the center. So what we wanted to do was put gates for one particular, for 84, put gates for 86. And in the center, do like a, you know, an entrance where we go in to, we do it all, we would do it all in stone. It would be done very, very elegantly.
So the entrance would be shared? Would it be kind of spanning the property line or would it be on one property versus other?
No. It's actually, to be honest with you, sir, it looks like it falls on between exactly the two of them because it's my brother's house. My brother's driveway is here, and my father's driveway is here. The property line runs, each one of the properties would get two columns on, wait, because there was two columns on each one.
Right.
With a gate in the middle, two on one property, two on the other property. That's the way it's going to lay out.
And, but they're going to be connected?
The gate will be shared.
The gates will be...
Shared between the two properties.
Correct. There'll be two separate gates.
There'll be two separate gates in a driveway.
A gate in each driveway.
Right.
There's two gates and an intrigate. There's three gates.
Like a person passing gate in the middle.
Correct. That's our problem.
That's the gate, that gate will be shared.
That will be shared. That's correct.
Shared, but, but when you're sharing that, you should put it on one property or the other, not in the middle, because if you ever do go to sell, you're going to have a problem.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Take it up.
First of all, my father, my father called me for a room, and now I'm at 2 hours, and I said, Joe, go to the public hearing. So I'm here, so I read that one online, I looked at the survey, what he was doing, look at his plans. Yes, it should be.
I just think it'd have a problem. It'd have a problem if it was in the, you know, right on the line.
We can put them on the side.
No, I think you'd either need, you'd need either an access easement or you'd need it put to one side.
It would be moved or changed later on as well.
Take a year or down.
Nothing would be moved.
Now, do we have to necessarily, I mean, I think it's, you should, I feel that you should do a passenger in and out. Do we necessarily have to do it? That means that if we don't do it, that we have to push the button for the gates to open up every time you go in. I mean, that could be done too if it's going to be a problem, because to be honest with you, it's just, they're going to be electronic. I think they're electronic. I don't know if we're going to do the pole gates or if they're electronic. I don't know if they figured it out.
I'm curious, how does that work with the fire department? How does that work with the fire department?
They usually have a...
No, I mean, you have to get sent...
There's a master code. If you put a key pad, they have that master, just like a knock box, only thing it's a button.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've been out to the site on Saturday. We all were there, we looked at it. We could see that you had the, I think the column locations painted, right, on the driveway.
You saw them, yeah.
Right. There's two on each driveway. So visually, right, looking, standing in on the street, right, and looking at that, you're going to have the two columns and a gate connecting fence in between with a people gate, right? And then another on the other driveway, you'll have the driveway entrance gate.
That's correct. Now, what I'm saying is that if we don't have to do the passenger gate, we can open up the gate each time, then we'll just do a solid rock wall in between the two gates. You're going to have one gate here, one gate here with a solid wall in the center to connect them. You know what I'm saying? We could do that also if it's a pain in the neck for the gate, but we could try to figure out something, a passageway around each one of the gates. But we could try to figure out something, a passageway around each one of the gates. You know what I mean?
From our perspective, I don't think it really matters if it's a wall or a gate. You know, it's the structure, right?
I just think it would look, I don't know, to me, it looks symmetrical. You're gonna spend all this money on these beautiful gates, and then you gotta walk around them to go in. I mean, the center one is beautiful. The open one, I mean, we just walk around it without the front.
So I believe we asked for this last time, but it would be helpful to have some image of what...
But I think you did, don't you? I thought you had an image of it. But then we submitted something into you.
He was gonna bring it.
He was gonna bring it?
I mean, I would have more than this, which is...
I don't know what that is.
Yeah, it's five squares or so. Is it stone? Is it all wood? I mean, I think you just said stone.
We said stone, yes.
Yeah.
So you want an actual drawing of what it's gonna look like, what the components are gonna be. There'll be iron gates, field stone.
This law related to the fence height largely comes down to aesthetics. You know, the town doesn't want a feeling of having high fences immediately adjacent roads. So I think this is an aesthetic question to a certain extent. So it would be helpful to know exactly the materials they're using, what it looks like.
So you don't...
Is that what he's thinking?
Yeah, well, these are the gates, these would be the two individual gates, something to that effect.
Okay.
Can I bring this up?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Now, you know, we would, if you need that, that's, we can sketch that out, no problem, but... And also, too, to support a gate like that, you need, you need some serious stone, you know, some serious steel stuff going into it.
Absolutely.
I mean, Mr. Porco, can I just ask you a question? Being that you live on a main road, do you really think a lot of people are gonna be walking to your house?
No.
I mean, do you really think...
You know what the people are gonna be used for, certain passenger gates are gonna be used for, honestly? You get the mail.
I mean...
That's it. I mean, they could walk around the gate for that, so...
Or you could just open the gate as well.
Just open it.
I mean, most of the people are gonna be driving to your house, correct?
Correct.
Not walking to your house.
Absolutely.
So I don't see why we're arguing about a gate in the middle when it's not real.
The only one that could possibly use it, and I don't know how this works now, is Amazon. They would probably drop it behind the gate, though. Drop it some, I'd have to work something, we'd have, they'd have to work something out with them, how they would deliver the package, whether it would... We could put a, we could put like a box with a lot of lock on it, or something like that. But if the gate, if that entrance way is a problem, then, you know, we're gonna work our way, tell me where to go with it. We'll do whatever you feel is most appropriate. I just think aesthetically, it'll look good, but, then again, I don't wanna spend the $5,000 for an entrance gate anyway, so he's actually saving me money.
You're thinking, John, that the wall or fence connecting the two may not be necessary.
That's all I'm saying. It may not be necessary, but if they put it in, and then they go to sell their properties, they could always just take it out as well. I mean, what, what...
Yeah, I mean, the wall makes more sense than a gate where you own half of a gate, right?
Right, I mean, you know, it's, and either or, really, I mean, you know.
I mean, you're going, I mean, part of the appeal is, I mean, the gates is, you know, we've had some issues in that area. I mean, not often, but we have.
I think last time they mentioned that they were gonna do a further expansive fence also in the front. Is that still in the plans?
If need be. I don't know.
We're approving the gate, but we're also looking to approve a six-foot tall fence.
Yes, six foot.
It was unclear where that six-foot tall, no, a seven-foot gate, six-foot fence.
Six foot, that's right.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be helpful, I think where we're going with this, right, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, I think it'd be helpful to get the full scope, right, of what you wanna do, and some type of a plan that shows us what your intentions are. Whether it's a wall, whether it's a...
When you have a gate like this, where is the seven feet being measured to?
I would think to the top of...
The top of the ornament?
The ball there.
The top, top of the ball, top of...
Well, we do, well, that's for a building. We kind of exempt steeples and certain things, so I don't know if this...
I mean, I would've thought that the ornament would be exempted, and you'd be measuring the top of the square post.
There is an exemption for steeples and different ornamental...
I ask, because this looks taller than seven feet to me in general.
The fence also looks taller than six in the middle, if this is the fence.
Yeah.
And I think your father mentioned that the wall, again, I can't certify it, but that the regular fence would be open, like wrought iron or something.
That's correct.
He didn't, he didn't want something solid.
Right.
So it wouldn't be solid, whatever the rest of the fence is, but we could clarify that.
Do you know the distance of the, how far back the fence is being set from the property line? I thought it was...
Either side?
From the front.
From the road?
Well, not from the road, from the, your front property line.
Oh, from the front property line.
Last time, I believe he said fifty, but...
No, it's not fifty.
I wrote, I wrote down fifty, and I'm not sure why.
I thought it was sixty.
It didn't look like that much when we were on site.
I thought it was. I'm just saying, it could be fifty.
Like what we saw there, it looked about a single car length back, which would be closer to twenty, twenty-five. It's a long driveway. I don't know why you wouldn't be able to set it further back. Again, I think this would impact our decision, the distance from the road and the visibility from the road, especially coming around the corner.
Well, the distance, isn't that, I read something, isn't it supposed to be sixty feet from the center of the road?
Actually, it's seventy-five.
Seventy-five?
Setback. I don't know if fences fall in, because what we did change with the code, anything new, new house, has to meet the seventy-five-foot setback to any state or county road. But existing homes only have to meet the setback of the zone that it's in. Because too many homes, especially like on nine day, they don't have more than thirty or forty feet. So you would've had people coming in constantly for hardship they couldn't control.
Right.
So this zone is R twenty. So they, so if that's the case, he needs thirty-five feet from your property line before the county road. Well, you have to show us that. So if that's the case, and you can prove to us you have thirty-five feet back from your property line, then the board would stay with the variances that are in front of them.
Okay, I'm not sure that that's what we saw. To me, it looked as though if you had a single car right off the road, it would basically take the space from the road to the gate.
Right, and it's a county road, so they probably have quite a bit of property outside.
It appears, I think they're both maybe flat lots, you know, or the one is at least. So I mean, it's pretty far back. The houses are set back pretty far.
They are. So let me understand something. Thirty-five feet from the property line, from the property line to the road? What you're saying, Barbara?
I'm sorry?
Thirty-five feet from the property line to the road?
No, no, no.
Thirty-five feet back?
I'm gonna show you something. So on a survey, this is your property line, which is pretty close to the road. There isn't a lot of road signage. You need to be thirty-five feet back from your property line. So you have to find the stakes, and then measure back thirty-five feet, and that's where this has to go, unless you're adding a third variance.
All right, all right. Oh, you don't, I mean, just highballing it when we were out there, where you had the columns painted out, right? I think you're there, but you get out of measurement and be sure.
Okay, so when I come back with a plan, I wanna make sure I'm correct here. We're gonna obviously show you what the gates are gonna look like. They're gonna have to be seven feet.
That's correct.
Okay, and we're here for seven feet.
Six for the gates. That's what your father asked for.
Six for the gates.
And seven, and let us, is this the exact thing Stanley wants to do?
That's what he wants to get, whether they can, they're making it.
Something, so this is much bigger than what he's asking, this particular picture.
I think that's the design he wants, Barbara, not necessarily that...
I'm just saying, this is, looks like it might be ten foot tall.
Oh, yes.
I think an elevation of what he's gonna build, whether it's, you know, with the gate in the middle, would be something we need to see.
So are we doing six-foot gate and seven-foot wall?
Correct.
I just wanna make sure I spec it out right.
That's correct.
Now, what about, because like the gentleman said, how many people are gonna be walking there, then you get the mail? So should we, A, factor in a passenger entrance way, or just say, screw it, and we use the code?
I think we would recommend that you do a passenger entry entirely on one property, just for a future...
On one property.
I think it makes sense. If one of the properties is sold, then you don't have an issue where neighbors are fighting about half a gate.
But I don't see that as our problem. I see that as their problem.
It's not our problem, no, you're right.
So I mean, they're the ones who are gonna have to deal with it, when they go to sell the property.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, I don't understand why we're even...
Right, really, that's an issue that you would have to figure out when you came across it.
As a courtesy, I would recommend reviewing it. And I would also ask that they look into how far back from the road they're comfortable setting it, 'cause, you know, just looking at what was there, I personally would be more likely to vote yes for this if it was a little bit further back.
Okay, what's the zone? You need to see further back from the center of the line? Is that where I measured from?
No, no, what I showed you.
What you showed?
Here's the road. Here's your property. You have to be thirty-five feet back, what I showed you on the survey. So it's from where your property starts. Thirty-five feet back, and let me tell you the downside if it's not. If he wants to go for a closer variance, we have to edit. It's gotta be republished, remailed.
Do this all over.
So it might, he has a lot of property. You might just wanna go thirty-five feet back.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with you. Plus, it's easier when you're pulling into it as well.
Yeah, I think ideally, you wanna be able to fit at least two cars with the gate closed, right? If someone's...
Two car lengths.
Yeah, yeah, I think logically, again, this is your problem, but I think it makes sense.
Thirty-five feet would be more than two car lengths, so don't go by that.
It's a big yard.
Your true measurement.
So you, you clear?
Yes, sir, I am. I just wanted to make sure, 'cause they only five.
No, it's fine.
So I had a question, Paul. The columns say seven feet, right? And then the walls, the wall is gonna be seven feet also, or?
Six.
Six feet.
The walls in between the columns. Another, I'm just looking at the drawing that was provided.
So what I'm, what I, I think I'm envisioning, and I know my father correctly, well, six foot. Then you have the column of seven.
Okay.
Comes back down.
Okay.
Six-foot gate, seven, back down to six. Got me?
Yep.
And you're gonna provide us a drawing of that?
Yeah.
So a detailed drawing, maybe from the supplier, yeah, if you guys have something...
Do you want the components, what the gate's gonna be built of? Like the steel, the wrought iron, the stone, what kind of stone we're using?
The more, the better. But the question, the question I was asking also besides that, next to those columns on the right and left says eight-foot wall. That means length, the length of eight feet going out from the sides?
Going out into the woods in the sides.
Into the woods?
Correct.
So you're gonna have an eight-foot fence, basically, and after that, there'll be no more fencing after that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, then you got the hill on one side.
Yep.
And then out, you got shrubs on the other, that's gonna go into it.
Woods.
So, you know, instead of putting fencing all the way around, we're just, we're trying to use the natural brush and the hill. And that eight-foot wall might come in handy, 'cause a lot of cars have been up on that, up on that hill there, so it might protect us a little bit as well.
Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, any, anything that you provide, better, is helpful, yeah.
So if we're good, there...
I can tell you, it's not gonna be a cheap fence.
So we can see that.
Very well.
We can see that. I don't think we're concerned about that. I think we're concerned about where it is.
But I think the more, more pressing than what Barbara said, if we have more, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually recommend if we have more, maybe forty feet. It'll be a little better, if you can pull in and...
It gives you a little, you hit rock when you're building it.
Visually also, you know, it is heavily wooded, so a little bit further back, I think you would almost not see it from the road, which helps your argument for having a taller gate.
You know what I'm thinking about is where, anyway, we'll have to change it, where we ran, where we're gonna, if he does an electronic fence, we have to run electric there.
Sure.
You know, I don't know if he's gonna do a pull electronic. I'm telling him to put electronic. And I don't know if they're gonna go in or go, I think they're gonna open up, open up into it rather than slide. I wanna do a slide at the village, wouldn't let me, so...
So it would open in, into the property, or?
They're gonna, well, if they, when you walk, when you go in, they're gonna open up the way for the, for the driveway.
Yeah. Towards the house.
Correct, yeah.
Now, if it comes out, it'll hit the car.
Exactly.
Bingo. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, so, Paul, that being said, right? Well, that being said, we are going to adjourn, right, the public hearing to the, should we, I'm thinking, to get all this together, maybe not the next meeting, but the meeting after?
December?
It would be a month.
A month, November.
The second Tuesday in October.
Second, okay, second Tuesday in October.
Which, they'll tell you the date in a second.
Which would be...
I think that's the seventh or eighth, if I'm not mistaken.
In a second, all right, so we're gonna...
What? No, no. Two, the first meeting in October.
October eighth.
Is two meetings from now.
Oh, so you want it in November?
October eighth.
October, the second Tuesday of October.
I think it's the eighth.
It's the second?
No.
No, she's saying not, not the sec, the second week.
It's the fifteenth of October.
Not the second meeting.
Fifteenth of October.
It's the sec, no, wait, it's the eighth.
October eighth is our, our meeting in October.
It's the eighth.
October eighth, sorry.
Columbus State Week is a big weekend in our business, so we know when it is.
Right, so, so, so two meetings from now would be, the, uh, meeting would be October eighth.
I was...
So, so we're gonna adjourn the public hearing to the October eighth meeting. Now, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the ten-eight, uh, meeting date. And can I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Yes.
So we will see you again on the, if anything comes up that would prohibit you from getting the, you know, these materials together by that time, just let Barbara know.
I will.
Also, if you get this information sooner rather than later, please give it to me so that she can circulate it to the gentleman so that they have time to review it.
Yeah, I just have to, the guy who's building the gates really has to draw it out.
Sure, sure you will.
If you have a supplier, I would imagine he can give you a drawing of exactly what he's doing, and photos of exactly what he's doing.
That's what I would do, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Nice meeting you.
Bye, Paul.
All right, next up on the agenda tonight would be appeal number two-four-seven-eight-three-two, area variance. Coretta Phillips seeking an area variance, section two-fourty-thirty-seven of district regulations, in an R twenty zoning district, where twenty feet to the side yard right property line is required, the applicant can provide twelve point six feet for the removal and replacement of an existing deck and porch with steps in the same footprint, thus requesting a variance of seven point four feet. The property is located at One Blackthorn Loop, on point five-one acres, and is identified as tax grid number six-two-five-eight-zero-three-one-one-zero-one-zero-seven in the town of Wappinger. Anybody here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, step up to the mic, please. Add your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, gentlemen, ladies. My name is Louis Sosa, Sosa Corp, LLC.
Gotcha.
Did you unite my address, or the address of the house?
Address of the application.
Oh, the application, yes. It's One Blackthorn Loop.
Gotcha.
And it's for Ms. Coretta Phillips. And our basic plan is kind of give an overall exterior renovation. So we're gonna be doing the siding, trim around the windows, we're gonna have new gutters, kind of basically redo the entire exterior. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at pictures of the house or whatnot, but the porch and the deck are just not in good shape at all. They're actually dangerous. You can't actually walk up the stairs. And I can attest to that, because I tried walking down, and I went through one of the steps. So it's physically not feasible to, you know, just maintaining that there on a, on a safety level, but also aesthetically. So the problem that we have is, apparently, I guess when the house was made, the code was different, and the distance was what it, what it is versus what the code is now. So we're just, we're basically asking, I don't know if it's for a grandfathering or just a variance, you...
You're legal, right? So, so the, the new structure is in the exact same footprint as existing?
Correct.
Correct. The, the existing is just in disrepair and needs to be replaced?
Right, you can't repair it. It has to be torn down. We'll probably keep the same footings, 'cause the footings are good.
Sure.
In a situation like that, I may actually just dig around the footing, 'cause there's not a lot of space. So in order to place them properly, if I do new footings, they have to be fourteen inches, and there just isn't, you're gonna end up with a lopsided, you know, porch, you know, we don't want that. So we may dig around and kind of increase, or put some rebar, and increase the existing footings, just because we did have an earthquake last year, four point eight. So when I build the deck, I always tell folks, you know, I'm building more because it's better that way.
Understood. All right, so, so the, so guys, the, the existing structure is the footprint, right? So you really doesn't have to mark out or, you know, do whatever, you know? So what we're gonna do is we're gonna schedule a site visit.
Okay.
And we're gonna come out to the house, not this Saturday, but next Saturday.
Okay.
Which would be the twenty-first of September. We'll be there around nine o'clock.
Twenty-first of September?
Correct, we'll be around nine o'clock. If somebody's there, great. If somebody's not, not a big deal, since, again, it's the existing footprint, the new footprint is the same as the existing footprint.
Correct.
So it's plain to see, right?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't make the twenty-first. Now we'll be fishing, so...
Well, it's gonna be nine PM, so there're gonna be drinks.
Maybe Sunday, Sunday and Monday, would Sunday and Monday be okay if I stop by?
Anytime.
Okay, perfect.
Do you know if the existing structure was pre-zoning, or?
I think that's why, when we looked everything up.
Yeah.
And it's a little different than what we had, so that's why we're asking this to be legal.
Okay, so it may or may not have been slightly altered.
At some point over time.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll do the site visit. We'll schedule your public hearing for that following Tuesday, which would be the twenty-fourth. Okay, so we're gonna schedule your public hearing for the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
And that would be the, that's where you folks would be able to give a...
Correct.
Okay. So that's, and that's seven PM?
Yes.
As well?
That's correct.
And I will be there Saturday, nine o'clock.
Right, then, not this Saturday, the following...
Following Saturday, yeah, the twenty-first, okay. All right.
All right, I think that might be it, right? Okay, so that's it, so we'll see you on the twenty-second.
He's gonna be fishing. I'd rather be with him.
Twenty-first, twenty-first. I'll be there on twenty-second.
Twenty-first, all right. Other than that, you can free to go.
Okay, all right, thank you, folks.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, with no further business...
Before we adjourn, can I, can I just bring something up?
Sure.
I'm just wondering if we've heard anything about the Alpine Commons lawsuit against us.
So what's that, I didn't hear ya?
Yes, we did. Okay, so, um, we lost that, so far, the way the court is, the town has decided to challenge it. I will send you the decision tomorrow for you, so you can read it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, is there, is there any need for us to meet with our attorney, meet with the town attorney?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, I just wanted to...
It just came through, too, so...
To the town?
Yesterday, I was reading it at the town board meeting. That's how new it is.
Barbara, you gonna email it to us?
Yes.
No, that's all right.
And our selected attorney has been put on a retainer.
Michael Laguardia, the town attorney, was talking to the town board. Who's going to actually challenge it? I don't wanna make an assumption, if it's Michael or someone else. I don't know, at this point.
It is not good to assume.
What?
It is not good to assume.
That's right, so I don't know that answer.
Got it. Are we all good?
Yeah.
All right, you have a motion to adjourn, please.
I'd like to bring up something, Pete. I'd like to bring up something about our forthcoming chairman. I understand that you put in your resignation.
I have.
And it's going to be, take effect the last meeting?
The last meeting of this month.
So we should probably talk about having a vote of some sort of who we'd like to take your place.
Sure, I don't know if there's the proper form to do that. I don't know if that's something we should do in executive session or not.
You can do, I mean, it's amongst you to send a recommendation to the town board.
Gotcha.
So we can do it privately, or?
I don't see.
Okay, all right.
So should we just address the...
Well, you kind of brought it up now, so it's, I think now you have to move forward.
Okay.
Move forward with...
Or you can adjourn it, and we can do it.
Well, yeah, I didn't...
Right, I prefer, I think I would preferably like to adjourn and discuss that.
Right, and then we'll discuss it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so I will then make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So moved.